Okay, we're at 6:30. So I'm going to bang the gavel and call to order the Lennox Public Schools School Committee Meeting of March 1st, 2021, which is being done remotely through Zoom. And we have a quorum of school committee members present. I think actually everyone's here. Francie's not at her computer just yet. So I'll ask if there's any public comment at this point. Seeing none at this point. We'll move on to correspondents. I don't have any particular correspondence this week. We had several letters last week about the possibility of sports opening for basketball, which we of course accomplished on Thursday night. And then there was some questions about sports going forward on fall too and spring, which we'll address later on this evening. School committee, oh, and I wanted to say, you know, at this point, it was starting the board report, there were unfortunately two obituaries of two longtime teachers in Lennox. Lois Brown who taught at Morris and Cameron for a lot of years. She was a special ed teacher, always found a place to take students who were in need. She was, in addition to raising her own family here in Lennox, she also raised several of her grandchildren. And Frieda Pierce, who was a English teacher at the high school, a sixth grade reading and English teacher, taught here for a long time, really had a rebirth when the computers came along and she could do word processing and started producing some amazing literary journals for sixth graders. And both of them were longtime educators in town and well-respected and just wanted mention them. So moving on, we have the school committee, many school committee meeting minutes of February 8th.
I'll make a motion to accept the school committee meeting minutes from February 8th.
Okay, so.
No second there.
Francie Sorrentino, second. Okay, we'll do, and are there any questions, edits, changes? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Francie?
Francie Sorrentino, aye.
Bob Muntz, aye.
Molly Elliott, aye.
David Rimmeler?
David Rimmeler, aye.
Christine Morrow?
Christine Morrow, aye.
And Anne Marie O'Brien?
Anne Marie O'Brien, aye.
And Bob Vaughn, aye. Okay, we'll move on then to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to, first of all, if there are people watching this, I know there are 37 participants listed. If anyone else is watching it, as I mentioned to a couple of members of the school committee at the outset, before the meeting was called to order, I think I've introduced the possibility for considerable confusion into tomorrow because I sent out a message which I because of my concern that the weather was supposed to be especially nasty tomorrow, at least in terms of temperature. Just advising parents to be aware of that and sending their kids to school. But of course, parents aren't sending their kids to school tomorrow because it's a professional development day and our PD, excuse me, our hybrid model would only allow half the kids to come to school. So I've asked the principals to correct my error since I completely forgot that tomorrow was a PD day. So for whoever is listening to this, I apologize for the confusion. The, the, the main issue that I wanted to raise with the committee tonight, and I'll do so briefly, is that we are looking very intently at so-called pooled testing for the novel coronavirus in our schools. And we have a meeting set up tomorrow for the faculty to review that matter with them at the end of the day. And we also have a meeting set up for parents, one at 5:30 Wednesday evening, or I guess it's late afternoon, and 7:00 PM on Thursday evening to inform them about the pooled testing, what it is, how it would work, that it's strictly voluntary, try and answer their questions. And we hope to get that implemented in coordination with Berkshire Hills, Lee and Central Berkshire sometime in the next two weeks. There are still a lot of details to be ironed out here. And some of those details will come into play, I think, when we get into the unfinished business discussion. But I do think that the pooled testing will, it will certainly have the effect, and it will, the effect will be greater the more parents and staff members participate. It will have the effect of lessening the possibility of the spread of the virus in school. And I think it will also help, and again, the more people who participate, the more helpful it will be. It will help both staff members and parents, and generally members of the community, feel that the schools are a safer environment. And so I'm looking forward to those meetings. I, I'm not an expert in this by any means, but I have attended what seemed to me to be an inordinate number of webinars from DESE on the topic. So I can probably answer pretty general questions at any rate. So if any members of the school committee, Mr. Chairman, have any questions about that, I'd certainly be happy to try to answer them. But otherwise, anything else we would be talking about will be taken up under the unfinished business portion.
Okay, are there any, does anybody have any questions they want to raise about the pooled testing? Hearing none, we'll move on. So the first item on the unfinished business is the school committee deliberation of the FY '21 budget. And I, you know, we've had a presentation by the elementary, the front office of all the budgets back in late January or early February, I guess February 1st. And then we had the high school presentation on February 8th. And this will not be our last opportunity to talk about the budget because we, we will have the formal budget hearing, which will come up. I'm not sure exactly what date that's scheduled for, but but I just.
March 22nd.
I'm sorry?
March 22nd.
March 22nd, thank you. So I just wanted to see if anybody had any comments they wanted to make on the budget at this point or any questions they wanted to ask of Melissa or Bill on, on any aspect of the budget. And/or if there were people in the public who wish to ask any questions also. Hearing none, we'll move on.
I guess I, I would, my question was, are there any changes that we should know about from what we were presented? I assume Melissa would bring it up, so.
Yes, there, it, it changes, changes happen almost every other day. And the last time we spoke for the elementary budget or special ed budget, there was a teacher who was retiring in November, now retiring in June. So that is going to save some funding in the budget. We did receive another retirement today. I haven't done all the calculations yet, but that should be a decrease as well. And there's a, an application of additional special revenue, which would reduce the amount that we are putting into the operating budget. So right now I'm looking at a decrease from original presentations of about $70,000.
Well, that's moving in a good direction.
It's the right direction, yes.
Yeah. But as I said, we will have an opportunity to further discuss this when we actually bring it forward for our formal budget adoption at the, later in the month. So, okay, so let's move on to the reopening of school pre-K to five. The, the task force met last week and, you know, kind of formulated, I think there's, I think there's a lot of excitement and anticipation that, that this is going to happen sometime, sometime soon. We know the governor and the commissioner are pushing for an April reopening, full reopening at the elementary level and, and perhaps more of a phased reopening at middle and high school. And, you know, to that end, the, you know, there, there are a number of things. I think the, I think the, the biggest thing that came out of the, or one of the things that came out of our meeting the other day was kind of preparing a list of the things that we need to be preparing right now during the month of March, so that when we get to April, we're, we're ready to, to do something. And obviously, you know, one of the biggest items on that list would be teacher vaccinations. I know the difficulty I've had getting scheduled for a vaccination has been, you know, monumental. I, I happened to actually get lucky today, but only for myself, not for my, you know, not for my wife. And so it's, it's an ongoing saga, but I think the fact that there's now a third vaccine may, you know, really help us get to the point where, you know, I know that there's an anticipation that teachers may start to get vaccinated by mid-March, mid to late March. Maybe the addition of the third vaccine might, you know, might make that, you know, really happen. And, and maybe the single shot vaccine, if that's available for teachers, will make it even, you know, maybe perhaps a safer situation. People might feel safer with that situation. So the teaching vaccination schedule is one thing. The whole pooled testing rollout protocols, which we expect to start in, I believe in mid-March. Principal Kelly has been working on developing a, you know, schedule, a full schedule. And we decided at the meeting that, from her perspective, and I know from my perspective as a former principal, to do it for all grades at once is easier than, than trying to have a schedule for, let's say, K and one, and then changing it to, to have all the grades. So there's a, yeah, there are a bunch of protocols that need to be addressed, including, you know, the arrival and dismissal protocols, the buses, you know, how lunches are scheduled. The specialist should be, you know, in that whole picture should be, you know, relatively easier to schedule. You're kind of going back to a regular school, school schedule. You know, perhaps reconfiguring classrooms with the six-foot spacing, you know, and potentially, you know, less than six foot. And any, you know, I think what we are, what we really want to make sure we do is talk to the teachers about the pedagogical concerns about, you know, switching from what they've been doing right now to, to full day. And, you know, to that end, Emily Wood has stepped forward to be the co-chair, you know, with me on the task force. And, you know, she will act, you know, along with, with Principal Kelly and, and others will act in a role of being a liaison with the faculty at Morris. And bringing forth any, you know, questions and concerns they have. But certainly we want to make sure that, that they're, obviously they're a big, they're the most important part of this whole process is getting, getting teachers vaccinated and getting the pedagogical concerns worked out so that we can open smoothly sometime in April. And we didn't set it in a date, you know, I think the date will be contingent really upon the vaccination schedule. But I know that Brenda Kelly has been working very diligently on getting that schedule set so that, from that perspective, things will, will get going. Some of the other protocols that we talked about will need to be worked out, but probably not insurmountable. We had quite a few people at the last meeting, and I think, and, and there'll be other, I'm sure there'll be other parameters that we need to discuss. And, you know, I, I sent Dr. Cameron this, you know, this tentative list that I was, you know, preparing on the planning for reopening. And I think, you know, he suggested that now the administrators really need to fine tune that themselves. And I don't know, maybe Dr. Cameron has something more to say on that. But that's kind of where we are on, on pre-K to five. I think there's a lot of anticipation that will be, that we will be getting kids back in. There's, you know, one other thing is the school council at Morris has been, you know, trying to think of some creative ways to, you know, get kids more outdoors. And, you know, perhaps have some tents or, or other structures such that they can, they can use the outdoors more. And, you know, and so I want to thank the, the Morris School Council for their, you know, their efforts, you know, going forward. I don't know if you wanted to add anything, Dr. Cameron?
Yeah, I would. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, this is an interesting situation. As, as we all know, there are quite a number of parents in Lennox and presumably in lots of other places in Massachusetts who want their kids back in school full-time. I think that most people who are associated with the public schools in Massachusetts agree with that sentiment and feel a similar sense of urgency. The, what, what makes this particularly interesting, and I'm using that term rather than something more colorful, is that the commissioner has decided to insert himself, I think. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, because I just did something and the screen just went away. Anyway, the commissioner has, has decided to seek authority from the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education to be able to require, and it's an indirect way he's doing this, to require that all K-5 schools reopen full-time in person on the 5th of April. The board has not yet met to, to hear this, and the commissioner was indefinite last week on when it would be convenient for the board to reconvene to give him this authority. It's likely to be sometime in mid-March. The commissioner can't tell people on which days schools to be in session. What the commissioner can do is decide what will and won't count for structured learning time and meeting the 170 days requirement. And what appears to be the case is that the commissioner has, is seeking authority to, to fail to recognize, in other words, to deny recognition, I should say, of fully remote learning, except where parents have been in fully remote learning from the outset at their, at their wish. And it may be that high, any time spent in hybrid instruction when students are not in school would not count toward days of instruction. Now, the date that the commissioner's chosen would form a kind of perfect storm with the several, several other factors. One of them being the continued insistence that MCAS be administered. Another one being that we will have only recently set up the pooled testing groupings. And we may have to then reorganize them completely if schools start on April 6th, the 5th, rather. And as was pointed out to me this morning at our administrative meeting, that the schools will need time to put themselves back together to accommodate larger classes. And doing it over a weekend, which it seems to be what the commissioner has in mind, is probably not going to be a very efficient, efficient way to do that. Moreover, when we get larger numbers of students in class, it has already been expressed to me several times that it is going to be very difficult for teachers to simultaneously manage students who are learning remotely and students who are in class when they're all there at the same time, rather than broken up into two cohorts. So it may be a necessity, and this was a, this is what caused the previous effort to come to a grinding halt, I think. It may be necessary to reconsider having students who are remote be instructed fully remotely by teachers who are dedicated to that purpose. This is very late in the year to be talking about that. But these are complications that will have to be worked out in order for this to move forward, at least on the schedule that the commissioner is talking about right now. The, the approach to be taken for middle and high school reopening is more complicated still. It can be done, but there are issues that have to be resolved quite appropriately. So with, with the Lennox Education Association. And so there's a lot of work to be done in the next few weeks in trying to get this in place so that if we're compelled to reopen on that date certain, April 5th, we're able to do it in an orderly way.
Okay. What about plans for the high school, middle and high school? Are those similar then to what we're talking about with?
Well, again, it depends on what, what it is actually that, that takes place. The, the reason that we have the cohorts in, in place in both schools, but particularly the reason we have the cohorts in place at LMMHS is that the six-foot spacing requirement that the Centers for Disease Control continues to insist is the safer distance. That creates a problem, a space problem at both schools, but particularly at LMMHS. And so if the space problem could be, could be corrected, then we could conceivably get, especially if there are students in any real large percentage who continue to want to be remote, which DESE is, is apparently prepared to tolerate for this year. We may, we may well be able to get everybody back in school, although I don't, at the, at the high school level, sometime this spring. I don't have a, a schedule for that yet. There's, there's a lot more that has to be done, as I said, including working with the LEA on this, on this issue. Interestingly, the physician who is now the head of the Centers for Disease Control is, is from, I think she was at Mass General Hospital. I can't remember her name, but, but she was part of the advisory group that worked with the Department of Public Health to recommend three-foot spacing between students as a safe distance. She's now with the Centers for Disease Control, and the report the CDC put out continues to state a six-foot distance. So I don't know what to make of that. It's, it's very difficult to know. Nobody, nobody wants to, to create obstacles to reopening school. Not for the sake of having obstacles that, I, I, I don't know of anybody who thinks it's a good idea for us to continue doing what we're doing in perpetuity. Because it's, it's a bad situation. It needs to be improved by getting kids back into school. What the safe distancing is that we can live with based on actual infection rates is, I think, something that's of real importance because that, that in a sense breaks the logjam, that and vaccination of teachers. And I find it personally, I, this is, I'm not speaking for anybody but myself here. I find it incredible that the governor of the Commonwealth is insisting that schools reopen and is not giving any priority to educators or, or school staff members generally. Not giving any priority to the vaccination of those, of those people. The governor of the state of Connecticut would put educators at the very top of the list so that the schools could reopen in an orderly way. And for whatever reason, that is not the policy of the, of the Baker administration. And I'm not making this as a political statement. I'm saying I don't understand what is going on there with the way that this problem is being analyzed at the highest levels of government in this state.
Okay.
I, I have a question. Do you think that, um, you know, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and the school committees themselves, as well as the teachers associations, could, you know, be writing letters saying, we, we agree with your request to best get this done. Please make educators at the top of the priority list. That seems like something that, you know, similar to letters, you know, that we've written. I don't know if I'll have any sway, but there are various entities, including, you know, local school committees, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, the Mass Association of Superintendents, the state teacher associations, as well as the individual teachers associations. That there could be a push for feedback to say, we agree, we want this to happen, but put teachers higher on the list.
The short answer, if I may, Mr. Chairman, is yes. I think that would be important. If, if, I, I don't know what pressure the commissioner is under. I don't actually know what he thinks as Jeffrey Riley. But as the commissioner of education or elementary and secondary education, he's subject to enormous pressure from a number of directions. It seems to me that the best thing they could have done, and it's still not impossible to do it, would be to place a heightened emphasis on vaccination of teachers or all school personnel in a building. That would be one thing. And the other would be to demand that, or require that districts submit plans for reopening school during the course of the spring to all students. And leave it, leave it at the local level. DESE can review it and criticize it. It can say, this is no good. Send us something else. They could do that, but, but there are enough differences, believe me, between, I mean, Lennox abuts Pittsfield. The issues that those two communities face are so markedly different in dealing with this that you would think that a sensible plan at the state level would be, let those districts figure out for themselves how to do this, and we'll review it, just like they review lots of other things that are done at the local level. But at the moment, what you've got is a cookie cutter solution to districts that range in size from Lennox with, with 730 or 40 students and two schools to places like Springfield that have 25,000 students and 50 or 60 schools. I, it, it just strikes me as a, as an ill-considered way to go about this. And that's, I think, the message that I know that MAS C has put out and the Superintendent's Association is putting together a reaction for the commissioner indicating what the problems are that local districts are going to encounter, that the state is not helping them solve by coming up with this one, one-size-fits-all date. I think we could do an excellent job getting school open in an orderly way if vaccination were a higher priority and we had, we had the time to make sure that all of the issues that can be foreseen are going to be resolved in a good way for both teachers and students. And get the schools open, the, the schools could be open before the end of April, I think, with that.
Okay. So do you think that we should craft a, you know, a letter pushing for teachers to go be, be higher on the, on the list? I mean, I know they're next on the list after the 65 plus, I believe. So they're, they're coming up.
They are, they are, but they're not given any priority over any other group. And by that, I simply mean, there, there was a discussion, if I, if I could. There was a discussion in our ad hoc medical group about vaccination of teachers. And local officials don't. And local officials don't have any more authority than anybody else does. To decide who goes to the head of the line. It was suggested that perhaps there could be school by school vaccination. For all of the staff. And it was pointed out, Dr. Doyle, I believe, was one of the ones who pointed this out. From BMC, that they can be much more vacci- vac- vaccinating. At a centralized site. It's a much more economical use of time and resources to do it at a centralized site. Than to go from school to school to school to school around Berkshire County. He said that you could vaccinate the entire population of, of school employees in a weekend if that were the. If it were done that way through a centralized, or, but not just one necessarily, but north central and south counties. Centralized sites. So. If the admini- if the administration or the Department of Public Health or whoever is administering these policies were to take that. Point of view declaring some, some Thursday and Friday or something as teacher vaccination days. You need to give the, need to give the vaccine time to become efficacious. So. That, that, that is a factor in play also in terms of considering reopening. Is when the, when, when the vaccine has, is, is finally working. But all of these things can be, can be solved. These aren't insurmountable problems. But they are problems and they need to be, they need to be worked through. So I, I think working in conjunction with MASC. And, and letting us at the administrative level work through the state organizations. I think that's the most effective way to get practical reactions. Not just, we don't like it, don't do it, but here are the problems. Here's how you could probably solve them.
Okay. Any other questions for? Dr. Cameron or anybody around the reopening of pre-K five or six twelve at this point?
Bob, I have a question. How often are these reopening meetings taking place now?
We have another one scheduled for next week, the Wednesday, the. Tenth, I think it is. And then we'll, you know, I think the thing at this point is. It's. It, a lot of what needs to happen is probably much more at the school level than it is at the task force level. Because the plans that we're making really, you know, have to happen. You know, we can, we can suggest things, but you know, now it's, if we have April fifth as a target date or some date in April for the elementary, for example. Most of that has to happen kind of administratively and using custodial staff and. You know, it's, it's less the task force at this point, but we will be meeting on the tenth to kind of review where, you know, where we are. And I think that it'll be an ongoing. I think it'll be the kind of thing where new information will be coming out. Fairly, fairly regularly so that we can, you know, we can update the task force. And then also update the committee when we get to the twenty first or twenty second, I guess, is our next meeting. So. I'm sorry?
I'd like to keep the momentum on it. So if we can keep. You know, a strong sense of forward progress. And if there's resources around things that we need, you know. As a school committee member, I'm perfectly willing to like foot the bill for outside janitorial services or. You know, movers or helpers or anything we can do to expedite the process along. I don't, I don't want to. Find us in a position where there's a mandate to fulfill and we can't get there because there's some activities we could have maybe expedited.
Yeah. And I think that that's what the task force was, was suggesting that, you know, let's make sure that our planning and, and execution is taking place. During this five week period, approximately five week period. So that, I mean, we didn't know, I didn't know about the April fifth target date until just tonight. But let's, let's assume it's five weeks, during these five weeks that we're moving, doing whatever we can to make sure that. If that is the date we opened, that we're ready to open.
Right.
I, I would, to Molly's question and then, you know, to, to your question, I think too. I would be in favor of drafting something from the school committee, a le- a letter resolution. You know, whatever is most appropriate to, to, to urge the state to. Prioritize and accelerate access for educators to the vaccine. I, I personally, I'm on the, the list for updates from Governor Baker. Every single time I get a text, which is frequently throughout the weeks, I eagerly. Refresh, you know, my news feeds as fast as I can and in the hopes that he's going to say. Oh yes, you know, educators are, are now eligible and, and it never happens. And I, I, I find it very frustrating. And I, I mean, I, I think we should put some support into the effort. So personally, I, I think it's worth doing.
Yeah. I mean, I think that, you know, I'm kind of, I'm kind of amazed actually. That the people working in the supermarkets and, you know, that the prioritization of the, of, you know, the people who are out there doing the. Who've been out there working on our behalf. Since last March. As, and, and teachers needed to have a higher priority. I mean, I would put them in this, I would put them right now with the sixty five, you know, plus people. I know they're going to be the next in line, but still. That next in line, you know, pushes things another week or two away. I mean, and so we've got. You know, we have a hundred and fifty or so employees in the school and, you know, I don't know how many there are countywide, but. You know, we're probably talking about, you know, you know, several hundred, obviously countywide. And it, as Bill said, it might be a, a two day with the right amount of vaccination vaccines available. It might be a couple of days and everyone's done. And so, I mean, I'd be, you know, I think if, if somebody would craft a short statement and it would really go to the governor. Because he's the one making these decisions, that would be great. And then we could.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to draft something. I can, I can circulate it back through you, Bob.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I would, I would encourage you, Christine, to use that recommendation that to, you know. County by county, you know, reserving slots two days, county by county across the state. For teacher vaccinations at, you know, three centralized locations per county can get the job done. And using something like. I don't know, telephones or some, you know, making sure the bots aren't jamming up the system. Those, those days that are allotted for the teachers and then perhaps the next group might be the grocery workers or something. But the teachers could be the first run through of prioritizing some of these high risk populations that are. Providing essential services for the public. So. It, it seems pretty smart to say, we're going to take these two days. And these are three count, you know, three county sites in each county for the teachers. So. And that will go a long way towards making their goal happen of schools reopening.
Can I, can I just insert something, please, Mr. Chairman?
You may.
With regard to what Ms. Ellie just said, I think it's worth remembering that. It's not only teachers who have interactions with students. There are paraprofessionals, there are people who prepare and serve food for students. There are people who work in the offices. It's generally, I mean, there are a lot of people who have, who, who have interactions with students during the course of the day. So it probably, if, if I could suggest, I mean, it, it, school employees would probably be. School or school-based employees. Somebody like me doesn't deserve. Priority because I'm not in the schools all the, all the time interacting with, with students and a lot of colleagues. But for people who work in school buildings, I think whether they're certified positions or other sorts of positions. That would probably be the best way to go about doing it.
I, I would also like to add that we should include school bus drivers.
Okay.
Yeah, good.
Thank you.
Can, can I, I'd like, just like to ask a question about this. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity here. To expand the effort rather than just a letter from the school committee. I wonder perhaps we could. Have a, some sort of form letter if there were parents who are wishing to participate. We, they could, we could have something set up. Or, you know, where they would be able to with, with the proper email. And, and where, if there was a community. Sure grassroots effort, aside from just our one letter, if the governor was perhaps getting. A significant number from this school district, i- it might amplify the impact of, of our letter.
Yeah. And sharing it with the other school districts and MASC so they could just, you know, really trying to put the pressure on. For a, a common sense solution to it. So.
Okay.
Do we think that's possible?
It's, well, I don't, I don't have a lot of experience with that, but it sounds like, I mean, imagine there's ways. You could post it online and have, you know, like as a petition and then parents could come and add their names. Supported as well. I just haven't done anything like that.
I wonder if we could have a, a form letter sort of up. That could be forwarded. I, I, I don't know. I can.
I feel like we could come up with our letter and then it could be sent to the parents through the two schools to say. You know, we're hoping to facilitate prioritizing teachers. If you feel so moved, please also send this letter to Governor Baker and the Department of Education.
Yeah.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I'm not knocking this letter writing. It definitely could help. But volunteering at these clinics. If you don't get your shipment, you go back to square one. So if you don't have enough, there's no guarantees. And there's still seventy four year olds and older that haven't gotten their vaccines yet. There just hasn't been enough. That, that site closes down if they don't get their shipment. So we have a shortage of sites.
Yeah.
That, that is the biggest priority.
Yeah. I mean, that's what's, that's what I've been encountering.
So it's a lack of, not necessarily a lack of being on a priority list. It's a lack of receiving shipments. They're doling all out. So BCC could have one one day and then be shut for three days. Dubois School, they seem to have their big clinics on Saturday and they're very, very fortunate. But like Rawlings and Lee and such like that, they don't get their shipment. They're shut down for three days. So that, that, that's a whole big dilemma. It isn't just really being number one or three on the list.
Right.
Keep that in mind, but it's, I'm not going to say your efforts aren't going to pay off or whatever, but you have to look at this big picture because. We're trying.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. And because of the difficulty I've, I've had getting on, on a list. But the, I think the thing is, I think the, the real hope anyway now is with the third vaccine that, that we may. We, we may see the ability to do more, more quickly. We may. I, I know they're talking about the Johnson and Johnson one possibly being available as early as next week.
It's also a little difficult if you do everybody out at once. You almost kind of have to stagger this in case there are people that have side effects. You can't have all your teachers out at once. So you gotta, you kind of sort of have to do a every three day type thing or something like that. But there's a lot to go into it.
Sorry. If I could, that's why I, when I, in passing, I mentioned on Thursdays and Fridays. Because I think. Well, at least what I've heard anecdotally is that people are more likely to have an adverse reaction to the vaccines. When the second dosage is administered. So if everybody got the second dosage on a Monday, say. You would have, you'd have quite a, quite an issue with the school. It wouldn't be able to open school probably because you'd have so many. People feeling the short term consequences of the second, second injection.
Okay. Are we good on this topic at this point? Okay. On Thursday night, we moved the discussion for fall and spring sports. To be discussed tonight. It was not originally on the agenda, but. But we did move it to the, tonight because we felt there'd be more information available. And so Melissa, if you could put Mike and David and I don't know if Brian's here or not. If you could make them. Active, that would be great. And we'll begin that discussion and. One of the initial questions that I had that I'm sure David can answer in a, in a moment. Is. We're talking about fall two, which we talked about the other night as being, you know, several sports, soccer, football. Cross country running, you know, I think just about everything except crew. And then we're talking about spring sports, which would be, you know, all the typical spring sports. Are they going to be running simultaneously?
No. They, it, fall two is looking to start around March twelfth, thirteenth. Or maybe the following week if we extend basketball. Because we don't want, you know, really to have overlap. And then spring is set to start mid-April and run to the end of June. Is that right, Dave?
You're not, you're, you're not, you're muted, David. We're not hearing.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for spending so much time on that previous discussion. No, I, right now, the. Winter season for skiing is ending this Friday. And if, if all goes well and our players are conditioned enough to play some games. We're hoping to extend the basketball season to the nineteenth. The fall two season would start on the twenty second. And the spring season would probably start. On April twenty sixth with, with the hope of no overlaps. That was, so students weren't forced to decide on one sport versus the other. So there's going to be specific windows for each season.
Okay. Yeah, that was my, that was my, my concern was for the individual student who might do a, a fall sport and a spring sport. And then, so that means that, for example, let's take football, that they'll try to get whatever games they can in during that roughly month period of time.
That is correct. So football with Lee co-op that the principals have been discussing. They're looking to starting a week early for fall two. If we have basketball players that are wanting to be football players, Coach Thompson there has already said. Finish out your basketball season and join the football team when you can. So. Players will be able to finish out their basketball season. He's, he's going to be running basketball through the nineteenth as well. So. There, the, there's going to be, the players know, will be told by Coach Thompson that if, if they are playing basketball, finish out your season, your short season. And then, uh, join the football team.
Okay.
One, one consideration we want to bring to your attention is that. We do co-op with Lee with football and lacrosse. And they have asked that we reciprocate and, and take their track students in the spring. Season, which we've always done. And, and really that meets down in Monument. And it's outdoors and it's individuals. So we really don't see a problem with that.
And the, the, the added co-op as well is that I haven't had much discussion with Carl Zigman yet. AD down in Monument, but typically we have a, a co-op with Monument for Crew. And Coach Schultz has expressed interest of having those Monument kids back. So. That'll be discussed in the coming weeks between the principals at Monument and Mr. Conneble.
So I guess the question then. Becomes then. The two of you will be recommending that we go forward with both the fall two and the spring sports seasons at this point?
Yes, we, we, we feel that, well, with the added pool testing. You know, and everything being outdoors, it's, you know, we're taking the most risk right now with basketball. And, and, you know, none of the schools have reported any major incidents of outbreak. So I, I think with safety protocols, we are, we're confident it'll run smooth.
Okay.
And on a positive note, I've had, just in a very short window, I've had forty five athletes sign up for boys and girls basketball. So we're hoping to have a parent meeting tomorrow night and hoping to get practices underway. This week so that we can get games in as, as soon as we can. But it's got us contingent on the health of our athletes. And how practices are going and how comfortable our coaches are.
Good, good. So then, Dr. So then, um, Dr. Cameron, are we looking then for a vote from the committee to authorize the, uh, fall two and the spring sports seasons?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is there any, uh, further discussion from the committee? Any further questions for David or Michael? Uh, or just questions for, um, that the board wants to wrestle with? We ready for a vote? Okay, then I guess we'd need a motion, actually. So if somebody would make a motion that the Lenox Public Schools authorize our administration to, uh, enact the fall two and spring sports seasons? Or enact is probably the wrong word, but throw the right word in and make a motion.
Um, I'll make a motion that, um, the Lenox Public School, um, and its administrators, uh, plan for and prepare and administer fall two sports and the spring sports season.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a roll call vote. Francie?
Francie Santino, aye.
Bob Munch?
Bob Munch, aye.
Molly Elliott?
Molly Elliott, aye.
Christine Morrow?
Christine Morrow, aye.
Anne Marie O'Brien?
Anne Marie O'Brien, aye.
David Remmler?
David, David Remmler, aye.
And Bob Vaughn, aye. Very good. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the, uh, we had a, I think each, I think each of us received a, uh, petition from Ellen Biagini Loftus uh, regarding MCAS testing and, uh, the desire, um, on, on her, on her part, and I think on probably other people's part too, that given the difficult year that we've had and the fact that kids are remote, the kids are in person, that the instruction has been, you know, uh, done in different uh, formats, that MCAS testing, uh, would seem to take away from the instructional time, uh, this year. Uh, and, you know, would not serve all the purposes that, um, that it, it might normally do. That petition that we received is one that's been going around to, uh, it's, it was put out by the citizens for public schools, um, and a, um, towns person could contact them and have our, you know, each of our names put in so that the email came to us directly, which, uh, which is fine. Um, I'm gonna I'm not gonna post her letter, um, but we have, I have prepared a, which I'm gonna share once I speak a little bit more here. I have prepared a, um, resolution uh, subject to our approving that resolution, um, to do exactly to, to request from the commissioner and the governor that MCAS testing be suspended for this year. Um, and so I'll post that so people can see it in the public. Um, it's not to say that there may not be good reasons for that the state is proposing for MCAS testing to take place, but given the year that we've had and the uneven, uh, uneven education that some people may have gotten, um, it seems like a, uh, it seems to me like not the wisest move to continue, um, having it. So I'm gonna share my screen. And, uh, so the public can see this proposal once I find it. Are you seeing that now? Whoops-a-daisy. That wasn't what I wanted to do. Sometimes you can get just too smart. Maybe it's attached here. There it is. Okay, um, first off, would anyone like to make a motion to, uh, have this resolution and then we can start discussion? Pros and cons of the resolution?
I'll make a motion, um, uh, that we, uh, pass the resolution, uh, as outlined here.
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any, uh, discussion?
I guess I'll, I think that it does make sense. And so I'll play some devil's advocate, uh, which is, um, uh, how often is MCAS useful for helping identify students that need intervention? Um, is it mostly just used for teacher feedback and school feedback or is it, um, and is our benchmark testing that's done during the year what's useful? I assume, I assume we have methods of identifying students who will need assistance other than MCAS, but I don't, I guess I wanted to make sure that's true.
Mr. Chairman, if I could say something on this and then I would ask, um, uh, Mr. Knibl to, to respond as well with the chair's permission. MCAS testing, uh, is, has two functions, at least as outlined in the law. One of them is to determine this, this is for the high-stakes testing at the high, high school level, is to determine, uh, whether students meet a specific graduation requirement that the, that the legislature has set up and has, was enacted into law uh, almost thirty, thirty years ago now. Um, the other is to establish an accountability system whereby school districts overall performance, uh, is, is, uh, established. Let me just put it that way, is established. It's, it's fun role as a diagnostic test for individual students um, is not very substantial, partly because the results don't come in until the school year effectively is over for the teachers who are, who, who's, who's students are being tested. Uh, and also what it may be speak, if you see patterns is curriculum coverage or maybe pacing issues, uh, but the benchmarking that's done by teachers um, frequently using the instructional programs that are, that are purchased for reading or math or what have you. Those are what, what really inform instruction. So MCAS could, results could tell you the district has a serious problem in some particular grade, in some particular subject. In which case it would be providing useful information, but not very individualized information. Although as I said, I said that, that the individual student results come in, but they're not really of much use to the teachers at the time that the testing is, is given and comes back. Um, but the benchmark testing, uh, is, I think, what teachers really find most useful.
Yeah, and as somebody who worked for the department for the last nine years, um, you know, we, w- we did a lot of work, you know, with school districts around looking deeply into their MCAS results. Um, there are, there are definitely things that you can learn at an individual student level. You can see how student performance, um, and and so, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not at all reluctant to approve this re- resolution tonight because of the, the year we've been in. Um, I do feel there is some value to MCAS and I believe that Massachusetts has the, the most rigorous testing, you know, out there among the states. Um, and so I think that when used properly, I think we we, we feel the high school determinations that come from this as well as the, uh, grade level information that comes from, um, third through eighth grade testing. I, I, I think it can be useful. However, in the situation right now, they're talking about doing a reduced amount of the testing, which is, which is probably good in any case, in any year. Um, but maybe having, instead of having, uh, two or three sessions of reading, having one session, um, exactly how it's gonna be administered to people who have been mostly remote instruction versus, uh, people who are in person. There are just so many questions about, and, and I just don't think that you can get a really good diagnostic information from you know, a one-hour test. And I think that we really count on our teachers with their daily formative, um, assessments, uh, seeing how kids are learning on a day-to-day basis to, um, you know, make the, to make the improvements necessary and to change their instruction from day to day. And I think that at this point for this year, that's what we need to rely on.
Uh, can I add, add the time component to the?
You may.
Um, so that they, they are reducing the amount of time that mid-school will be tested. They are saying that there would be about an hour of, of E L A, hour of math, and then the eighth grade would take science. And they're, they're, they're stating right now that it's going to be a little easier to administer than what they're expecting in the high school, which is the high-stakes testing for the competency determination for their diploma. Uh, at this time, they gave us the window of, um, April and May for grades ten and eleven to do three sessions of E L A and two sessions of math. And then our ninth grade would do two sessions of science. All within the window, there's two weeks of A P testing where we have our upper-level sophomores and juniors that are in A P classes and they'll be taking that test as well. So, um, besides reasons that, that Dr. Cameron and, and Mr. Vaughn had pointed out, um, it's a logistic nightmare for our school in order to proctor the tests with their test security they require us to have. Um, that means that, you know, we have, we have sessions, we have rooms, we have seating charts and, and we have this, I mean, basically it's gonna shut down the school, um, for, for a substantial amount of time for us to test all six grades of the seven grades we have in the school. And it all occurs in April and May.
Right.
So we're, we're gonna disrupt our schedule a, a, a great deal. I mean, i- if they want us to do it, we have to do it. I, I pray that someone comes to their senses in Boston.
And that is when we're hoping to kind of get some maybe normalcy, normalcy returned, um, if at all possible. The, those three months, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems, it seems kind of productive to have the kids, you know, walk in, in person in April and and then start their MCAS testing pretty much immediately.
Um, we, we don't have a chance, we, I mean, we have no choice but to wa- during those testing windows to close our special education rooms because they're the small group testing centers. Um, use outside faculty and, um, combine classes under someone else's supervision in order to have proctors for these exams.
Does anybody, uh, else have any questions that they'd like to raise regarding this?
You know, uh, Bob, I, I, I'd just like to make a comment. Um, I, I can't say that I, uh, I, I agree. I, I, I can't say that I would disagree at all with this resolution. Um, however, what I'm hearing, uh, is, uh, perhaps a, a, a more relevant local issue. Um, you know, you had mentioned that this has been perhaps a year of, uh, uh, of uneven education for our, for our community. And it makes me think of how we're going to address that next year. And, and I think that, uh, while it, and I, and I think we should start looking towards what next year is going to be now. Because I, I feel that if we, you know, if everyone's vaccinated and everyone's in school and if, if, um, it, there is, you know, and everything is back to the way it was, I don't necessarily see how we can just jump right in to the curriculum the way we would expect it to be. And, um, I think we need to give some thought to the fact that, uh, how do we identify? And how do we have those diagnostic tools that are available? How can we identify those areas, those students where, um, where we can, you know, bring everyone up to an expected level? And, and, cause I, I, I think if we, you know, we, we've had this type of year, we have to just be able to ignore it and actually kind of act like it didn't happen and then pick up the following year is, is not really going to best serve our, our students. I think we really need to, and this is, you know, I, I, this is obviously about the resolution. However, I think we need to give some hard, hard thinking about how are we gonna address the needs of our students? And next year, like this year, may very well look very different, and perhaps it should, to a typical year, um, to a typical first semester of, 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 of a typical year.
Can we talk for a moment about the, the language of the resolution?
Um, oh, yeah.
I, I su- I support passing a resolution. I'm just wondering, and I'm by no means an authority on this topic, but I'm just wondering, um, if what we're asking, uh, the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to do is, is feasible. And by that, I'm, I'm, uh, thinking specifically around the obtain a testing waiver and to cancel MCAS testing. And so if we, if we have more information, um, I'd, I'd love to hear it, but I just, I was doing a little reading here, um, on my other screen. And apparently the U S Department of Education informed state education leaders last Monday that they will not invite state requests for blanket waivers of assessments, um, which were the waiver type received last spring. Um, and so if, if that is indeed the, uh, inaccurate, um, statement, I wonder if they're even considering requests to cancel or if we might instead modify the language to something like, you know, appropriately modify the, the terms of the test or, or something else. I just don't, it, it seems like if we're gonna, if, if we're going to ask, um, you know, the Mass Department to do something, we should, we should ask them to do something that they could actually have a reasonable chance of succeeding at.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I took the language, you know, I shortened up the language from the petition that each of us got or the letter we got from Ellen, uh, Biagini Loftus, um, and just included, you know, some aspects of it. But it is true that the department has to get a waiver from the U S Department of Education in order to uh, cancel MCAS testing. And are we tilting at windmills expecting that that's gonna happen? Probably. Um, given the stance so far from the Department of Ed, um, or from the U S Department of Ed. Um, that said, I think Massachusetts is doing, in shortening the tests, is trying to do what they think is, our, our department, that are Desi, um, to ameliorate the situations to some degree for students. I'm not convinced that that should even, that it, it should even happen. I don't think we have the ability to say Lennox isn't gonna participate this year. You know, um, you know, just unilaterally. So it, we really need the department to do something. They, I believe, feel that they've done that by shortening the testing. Um, but I think putting it all in that April-May timeframe, in a very tight timeframe, in a year in which you know, we've had, you know, a lot of instructional, um, odd instructional situations, I guess I'll put it, um. I don't think it's the most useful. Year to be testing, but I think, I think you are right, Christine, probably. There's probably not much we can do the way this is worded. I'm not sure. How I would word it any differently to get it, an outcome. You know, I think that. Rob Curtin, who's the testing person at, in Malden. Is, I think they're marching ahead as though this is a done deal. And I don't know what effect, you know, this petition will have. It's going to school committees all over the state. And it's going in the same, not the wording that I have here, but. But it's, it's all pretty much that question about obtaining a testing waiver, which I, which may not happen. So.
Okay, so even if it's. Not feasible, we're at least establishing a position and, you know, kind of taking.
I think so, I think so, because I don't know that there's. I think our department has already tried to lessen the amount of testing. I don't know if our department. I don't know that our department has actually sought a waiver, maybe, maybe Dr. Cameron knows that. And just been denied it. Or whether our department. Was planning and going ahead with MCAS regardless.
Mr. Chairman, I, of all, at, at all of the meetings I've attended. Where the commissioner has addressed MCAS. I've never heard that the department has sought a waiver from the US Department of Education. For the testing requirements that exist under every student succeeds act, the Title I successor. There, there are two factors in, in. Suspending MCAS, one of them would be to get a waiver from the US Department of Education. And. The fact that the department has announced, the US department has announced what it has announced. Doesn't mean it's incapable of changing its mind. There is, there are members of Congress. From the state of, or the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Who may be able to be persuasive in giving, asking the US DOE to reconsider this. And I don't imagine that this is the only state where that's a, where that's an issue. The other is that MCAS is required under, under Massachusetts law. It was part of the. It was supposed to be part of a comprehensive assessment system. It's currently the only part now of a comprehensive assessment system. But it required last year, an act of the legislature and Governor Baker signed it. To suspend MCAS last spring, when all the schools in the Commonwealth were shut down. Now, the, the fact that there's a mishmash of some schools are open, some schools aren't. Or they're open, but they're open only remotely, and there are schools in hybrid, very, various hybrid forms, and there are some school districts. Where students are attending full time. It's, it's, it's a complicated situation, but all I, all I can say is, if, if the, if US DOE is announcing. That it is not going to grant any waivers, then it's certainly not going to grant any waivers. Unless people ask them to change their mind. So I don't, I, I don't see any, any harm with. Perhaps including the, let the representative Neil and Senators Markey and Warren as recipients of this. That, that's the only way that, that US DOE is going to pay attention. To, to anything is for members of Congress to, to make an issue of it. And I don't know what the positions are that they have on it, but they're the only, they're the only representatives we have in Congress, so.
Okay. I think we can, I think we can add that to, to it for sure.
Yep, I think that was, that was a helpful comment. I agree.
And I think it's good to ask for what we want, which in light of the whole conversation, I think we, we do want and need a waiver. And I. These times, the US Department of Education may change their position, so.
Okay, are we ready to vote on the resolution with the addition of, of our congressional team in Washington? Okay, so the motion was to approve the resolution as, as written with that, you know, alteration that we'll make. Francie Sorrentino?
Francie Sorrentino, I.
Bob Munch?
Bob Munch, I.
Molly Elliott?
Molly Elliott, I.
Christine Morrow?
Christine Morrow, I.
Anne Marie O'Brien?
Anne Marie O'Brien, I.
David Remmler?
David Remmler, I.
And Bob Vaughn, I. So I think that that brings us to the, to kind of the conclusion of our meeting. I do want to. Note that we have. Three open positions. Bob Munch mentioned this a couple of meetings ago, actually, when it was first noted that papers could be taken out for school committee. And in fact, Bob, your suggestion that people take papers out has, has been the case. Because there are six people so far who've taken papers out for a school committee. This going to be. There's going to be, you know, a lot, a lot of action this spring, and I've just asked the Vice President of the. Morris PTO if she would try to arrange for some kind of a candidate night. A Zoom candidate night so that people can meet the candidates at least for an hour, maybe some evening in late April, early May. Before the election, which I think the election would probably be May tenth. Because this is unusual, A, it's unusual, we have this many candidates. And. Which is good, because it shows a lot of interest in the schools, but it's. The, the method of people finding out who these candidates are is gonna be totally different, so. I think that it'd be great to have a candidate's night, and I'm, I've asked Priscilla. France to see if she can. Help facilitate that, you know, it's not something that we would do ourselves, it would really have to come from a, a community group. And I think that the, the Morris PTO is, is pretty active in that way, so.
I think that's a great, that's a great idea. I wonder if it would include something like. You know, questions that each of the candidates could respond to, you know, or something. With, with some structure or substance.
Yeah, I've, I've asked, I mean, I always sent this out to Priscilla today and, you know, suggested that it'd be an opportunity. For people to, for each candidate to speak and talk about themselves and, and their interest in being on the school committee. And then perhaps some questions that go to all the candidates from, you know, that the PTO could.
Sure, okay.
Bob, you know, is the signature process still the same, or did that change because of COVID?
Well, it is the same. You have to get twenty eight signatures. You can do it. People evidently are sending them around and getting, you know, fax into people and getting, you know, fax back. They're turning in, instead of like maybe two pages with twenty eight signatures, they're turning in maybe multiple pages with one or two signatures on them. Yeah, it's a little bit different. You can't go to a basketball game and get ten signatures and, or a concert and get ten signatures anymore. So it is trickier, but, but the process still is the same. You know, I was talking to, to. Carrie, Carrie Sullivan today about it. And it still is the same, so they, the people do need to get the signatures and, and turn them in, and there could be more candidates. Because the, the date is, we're turning them in is March twenty second, so. There's, you know, but people do need to recognize they do need to get twenty eight signatures, so for anybody who might be on here tonight. Who's a candidate. Be working on it.
Well, it's very exciting. I'm, I'm happy to hear it.
Bob, that the middle and high school, school council would wanna host a second one. That might, I don't know if, if there's ever been two panels hosted, but given. You know, to help the public really know the candidates, that might be also useful.
Yeah, I think it might be, given the timeframe, I think it might be good. I, I, I don't know what structures exist at the middle and high school in terms of PTO. So if there is an, an existing PTO, or, or if the school council wants to get involved, I think maybe combining to do one. Session would probably be, because it's gonna. We're coming up at the end of April, we're coming up to a, some kind of a science program at Morris. That will, that the PTO is heavily involved in, you know, they would, I think they think this. You know, they'll work the science thing around whatever date, you know. You know, works for this, but I think to have two of them might be, you know, and I don't know what structure exists at the middle and high school in terms of a PTO, but if it does. I mean, I can certainly reach out to them in the same way I did to Priscilla. But I was thinking, I was thinking one night, make it, make it public. You know, publicize it well, and hopefully people can tune in and, and see it, and or watch it on, on CTSB afterwards. So. Okay, anything else for the good of the order? I guess I could take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Francie.
I'll second that.
Bob Munch, thank you. Francie Sorrentino?
Francie Sorrentino, I.
Bob Munch?
Bob Munch, I.
Molly Elliott?
Molly Elliott, I.
Christine Morrow?
Christine Morrow, I.
Anne Marie O'Brien?
Anne Marie O'Brien, I.
David Remmler?
David Remmler, I.
And Bob Vaughn, I. Thank you very much, everybody.